DeeDee, how close are you, DeeDee? You good? I think we're pretty close. It's 7:01. You're good? All right. Bob, are we live?
We are not live on YouTube, but you are live, so people can call in, people can zoom in.
Perfect, thank you. All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call the Planning Board meeting of Wednesday, April 13th to order. You good, DeeDee? Okay, so first up is Agenda Continuance's modifications. Leon? There are none. Okay. Next is the approval of minutes for the Planning Board meeting of March 9th. What is your pleasure? So Mr. Harding has made a motion, Ms. Wilson has seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is abstaining because he was absent. All right. Onward. Item number three is applicant Church Community Housing Corporation, owner town of Portsmouth, AP 23 lot 2110 Bristol Ferry Road. I do have one correction, this is not a concept plan review, this is actually pre-application conference review of a low or moderate income housing development, LMI. So.
Chairman, we, we changed that on the Secretary of State's website, it does say pre-concept.
Perfect, thank you, Mr. Crosby. Mr. Chappelle? Could you just make sure your mics work in there, Court?
Oh, there's the green light.
Perfect, thank you.
So. In talking to the solicitor, he has, I believe, given an opinion that we are here based on a comprehensive permit. So what normally happens if you have an apartment complex is that that would fall under Article 7, Section C of the Portsmouth zoning ordinance, and the exclusive jurisdiction of that would be the Portsmouth zoning board under what we call a special use permit and the A through J criteria of meet with the comprehensive plan, compatibility with the neighborhood, traffic hazard, other types of considerations. Whenever there is an LMI component to it, there is then a number of things that we have to satisfy, a number of individual requirements. But we're really here because the government says that we need 10% LMI. There had to be a fast track, if you will, for what's called a comprehensive permit, so that developers that were going forward with LMI that would often be met with not in my backyard type arguments would have a remedy to not only go quickly and not get caught in the quagmires of what can happen between a number of town boards, but also have a special appellate process. So fairly limited reasons in the way the board can turn things down. Not necessarily because neighbors don't like it and it affects the neighborhood like you do in zoning. So there are specific requirements. We also remind you, this is a pretty unique petition because the land is owned by the town of Portsmouth. You know it as the senior center and the baseball field. It has been one of the town's biggest either, I don't want to say controversies, but issues. We all saw the signs in what to do with the senior center, how to preserve the senior center, and what effect, if any, the development of this into an LMI project would have on that. And there were meetings and committees, and Mr. Beldon from Church Community will tell you that with a great deal of compromise and a great deal of discussion, finally before the council, it was put together that the senior center will exist on these premises with LMI housing. It stands for low to moderate income, of course, but this particular low to moderate income housing, trying to get to the town's 10% goal, that 10% of our housing is available for LMI, would be limited to the elderly. And there are obviously nice advantages to the town to meet your 10% with elderly housing. Because of the need for elderly housing and relatively low tax on the services and relatively low tax on things like the school system. But also remember, most of us that voted in town, we had a choice on a referendum because under the town charter, the town cannot sell property or enter into a long-term lease unless voted on by the public. And it was voted on by the public, but before it went to the public, this group of people that you're gonna hear from tonight had to give this entire presentation to the council, show them the building, commit to the units, commit to the senior center. And the referendum that passed says that it has to be presented to you in substantial compliance with what was given. We can't add 10 units because the referendum said, no, this is what you're pitching, and you're allowed to enter into this ground lease as long as it says substantial compliance. So we certainly. Are obligated and have committed to presenting just that which was approved by the council to go to referendum, and then ultimately approved by our citizens. So with that, I'm gonna start by introducing Christian Beldon from Community Housing. Most of you know, he then will introduce your team. There is a presentation. There's relatively brief tonight because it isn't testimony, it doesn't count. It's just, we want to give the courtesy of saying to you guys, this is what's coming forward. And if there's questions at the end of this, there could be technical review that you might want. There could be specific data, traffic counts that you want, and we can decide that when we come before you with the formal application soon, we have all the information you've seen. And you've said, well, I reserve my right that I might want more later, but based on the preliminary, I think I'd like to see this, and I'd think they'll like to see that, and it will keep us moving and more organized. So with that.
Good evening, members of the Planning Board. Thank you for having us here tonight. I'm Christian Beldon.
Yes, name, address for the record, just because we've got folks listening to those, thank you.
Yep, I'm Christian Beldon, I'm the Executive Director of Church Community Housing Corporation. My address is 6 Newport Ave in Newport, Rhode Island. As Court has given you the overview of, this is a development which represents a partnership between the town and Church Community Housing. We were approached by the town because of the challenges to the existing senior center facility relative to fire code issues and the reduction in capacity and long-term expenses related to maintaining and improving that facility. And so we were asked to see if there was something that we could do to save the senior center at that location, and also to meet the town's needs for affordable elderly housing. We pretty quickly realized that we, we thought that we could assist the town with achieving those goals because there is a natural marriage between a senior center and senior housing in that many of the same amenities and common spaces that exist in your typical senior housing development are also the same spaces that exist in a senior center, your dining room, your library, your multipurpose space, with very few exceptions. As we did the analysis of the spaces that existed in the senior center and compared them to the spaces that we've built in all of our other senior housing developments, there were just a handful of, of spaces that were sort of atypical. The thrift shop offices for the senior center staff. And so, you know, we thought we, we can provide the town with a new, modern senior center of the same size that currently exists in a new facility connected directly with 54 units of senior housing, of which we anticipate some of the existing senior center members may become residents of this proposed housing development, and that the senior center director and board of directors have said that they are gonna welcome the new residents as new members of the senior center. Furthermore, we identified the goals of saving the historic Anne Hutchinson four-room schoolhouse and the existing ball field there. Originally, when we were, had initial preliminary discussions with the town, you know, we were told, well, if you need to develop the entire parcel, then we don't really need that ball field. But then I actually learned, talking to Court, that, you know, every Saturday, that, that ball field is used for Little League. And, and we really love the idea, and not just us, but there are many studies that show that that kind of mix of populations, having, you know, seniors living at a place where you have children playing, you know, Little League, it, it is a, a good mix of populations. Not in terms of who's housed there, intergenerational mixing generally is problematic, and we're not proposing that. All of the housing that's proposed in the new facility would be restricted to seniors 55 years of age and older. The only small caveat to that are the six units that are proposed for market-rate condos to save the, the Anne Hutchinson four-room schoolhouse. But we believe that the best practices show that having a ball field on site with children, you know, playing Little League creates a really great environment for both the, the seniors who will be living in the housing, who'll be able to look out of their apartments and see the kids playing, to be able to come down and, and, you know, sit in the bleachers and, and watch the ball games. And, you know, so the proposal that you have before you is really the representation of all of the work that went into creating this plan in consultation with the town-appointed senior center advisory group, which consisted of the Executive Director of the senior center, the President of the Senior Center Board of Directors, the DPW. Head, Brian, the President of the Town Council, the Vice President of the Town Council, members of the senior center, Gary Crosby, the Town Planner. And, and so, you know, we worked very diligently to come up with a plan that, that addressed as many of the town's goals as possible, understanding that the senior center was the the focal point and the, the goal that at the time, you know, and continues to be, you know, what most of the residents in town are focused on, and that we really needed to ensure we were meeting or exceeding that goal completely. And so, as Mr. Chappelle has alluded to, we went through a referendum, the voters approved the referendum granting authority to the Town Council to enter into a long-term ground lease with us, which allows us to develop this, this development. But the option for that ground lease explicitly states that the ground lease is contingent upon the approved development being substantially similar to the one in the conceptual design plans, the plans that were presented before the referendum to the town voters, the rendering of which was on the signs that we put out before the referendum vote. And, and so, you know, both Church Community Housing and the town really need for this development to move forward substantially as it exists now, because that is the plan that the voters have approved. It's the plan that I think addresses the goals of the, the town and all of the different interested parties as well as possible. And so, you know, we, we hope that you'll have a favorable consideration of this plan that we have worked very hard on up until this point, and which we believe happens to have materialized at a fortuitous moment in time with a funding environment which is more favorable for this development than it may have been in the last two decades at least.
So one thing, sitting as a zoning board, is that there's building setback requirements, building height requirements, building story requirements, lot coverage requirements, density requirements, all which exist not only in the special use permit section, Article 7 of our ordinance, but also in Article 19, the LMI. And if that's not specifically referenced in LMI, it goes back to Article 7. So when we get before you, we'll be able to tell you, this is what the setback is supposed to be under the ordinance, this is what it is. This is what the height under the ordinance is, this is what it is. Remember that every time we need a variance, that variance has already been brought to the attention of the council, not that it binds you, but it's nothing new, and it was included in the referendum. But we know there's a couple of variances, because anywhere in town, for instance, you can have a whole height requirement of two and a half stories, and this is three. And it's three stories with a architectural roof, so we're getting the, the exact numbers because it depends on the grading, because as you know, you go from existing grading. But there'll be some of that. The density is X square feet per unit. And I believe at the council, it was suggested that that may only allow 40 units as a matter of right. We'll give you the exact math, 234,000 square feet worth of units, and you're higher than that. But the competitive market of financing and the, in conjunction with the town, we're spending extra money to build you a senior center, so it has to work from a financing and marketing point. That dictated the three-story, 54-unit building. So you'll, where there are variances, we'll point them out at the full application. But you have the right to vary them in accordance with the LMI ordinance that specifically gives you the right to modify the provisions of the ordinance and the modifications of Article 7, if not specifically listed in the LMI. But we'll point that out to you. We'll also point out what's called the A through J criteria of what you have a standard, and I'll print that up for everybody. And then the LMI has another list of specific things, including normally that 10% of the units in a building must be LMI. This is 90%. This is all but the six units that are in the Anne Hutchinson building. And if you ask why they're not elderly housing LMI, it's mainly because that old building is two stories. Elderly housing needs elevators. Elderly housing does not use stairs. Those have to be townhouses, or they'd be just economically not possible to fix that old building. And that makes those more conventional and not limited, right?
Yeah, it's, it's really. The, the cost of converting that historic four-room schoolhouse to affordable elderly housing would just be too high on a per-square-foot basis to get the funders to be willing to, to commit the, the funding necessary. There's just an economy of scale with new construction, with the number of units that we're proposing in the new facility, that gets the construction cost per square foot down, particularly because you're talking about a brick building that's historic, and that in many cases doesn't meet current building code. And so the, the structural modifications, just everything involved, when we looked at it, it just was not feasible from a cost standpoint. The only way that we think that it can be feasible to renovate and rehab the existing Anne Hutchinson school building is to convert it to market-rate condos. The idea being that the sales proceeds from the sale of those condos will be enough to cover the conversion costs. That's our hope, anyway.
I know the board understands it, but when, if you were just developing condos that wasn't gonna be kept in the portfolio of the LMI, and all, and all these units were individual, then there are rates that are set, but you cannot sell the unit for more than. I believe it's about 268,000 or so now, but it depends on the.
Family size.
Family size and the mean. But you can't build a house now in this environment for 268,000 and sell it. So if, if they were not, if they were LMIs and they were let go at condos or at the rent that is gonna be charged for affordable housing, you can never make them meet. And you could try to carry that building if you weren't also trying to carry a senior center. But the fluff in any development is already taken up by making sure we have a Class A senior center for everybody. That just doesn't leave any more room, right?
That's correct.
And there's some possibilities that the engineering on that building will not even allow it to be done. So it's not a, at, at the end, it's going to be somewhat like we did at Newport Beach Club PUDA. The building may be approved, but it's not mandated. You know, some of the, sometimes we do PUD, you must build this and you must build that. That's going to be not a priority of what is done here. It's not, we're doing the market, and then we'll do the LMI. This is all about this LMI building and the senior center. And then if the funds allow, and if the market allows, we'll move our attention to that building as a secondary without the obligation to do it.
And I'll also say again, I've said it on the record before, that if there is any surplus proceeds from the sale of those market-rate condos, that, those will just become sources to the affordable housing and senior center costs. You know, we're limited by the, the funders in terms of what we can earn as a developer's fee. And so that is what it is. The, there, there won't be any, you know, surplus sales proceeds coming from those market-rate condos that'll go into, you know, Church Community Housing's accounts. It would all just become a source to the overall development, just so you know. And there's really, quite frankly, the only reason we're doing that, it's not in our mission to create market-rate condos, we're just doing it because we want to try, we want to see the Anne Hutchinson school preserved and put into a, you know, the highest use possible, and get it back on the tax rolls, and, and just see it, you know, preserved. Because there aren't that many four-room schoolhouses left in New England, and so that's, that's the plan that we have to accomplish that. It, it, you know, depending upon where the market is, by the time we get through permitting and are at that point where, you know, we're looking at construction costs and what the market, the expected sales proceeds of those condos is, it, it, it may not work. We may end up handing the keys back to the town for that building, but our desire definitely is to, to save the school through this, this avenue. I'll say the same is true with the, the ball field as well. You know, it has been our goal to save the ball field for the reasons that I mentioned earlier, but we have not completed the engineering for the septic system, for the drainage, for, you know, all of the site engineering is not done. And so it, it is possible that a relocation of the ball field on that site just doesn't work. If that turns out to be the case, my understanding is the town was planning on, on building a new ball field somewhere else anyway to replace that ball field. That may end up being what happens. It's not our preferred scenario. Obviously, you know, I would really rather have the ball field and the kids playing ball there on site with the, the seniors. But I just have to, you know, be upfront and transparent that these are things that will only be determined as we continue down the road with engineering and further design.
And that was put on the record in front of the council as well.
Multiple times, yeah.
This was a bonus, actually, because it wasn't supposed to happen. And it was really a conversation with me that the ball field wasn't used, and I said, I drive that field every Saturday, and it's filled with all the, it's, it's not only the Little League field, it's the Littlestuckham. It actually is the best one to have in your neighborhood because it's just the eight-year-olds and nine-year-olds because it's a small field, so. With that said, could you introduce the team that you put together, and then we'll just show you some things quickly?
Yeah, it's my pleasure to introduce Paul Atman and Alana Jaworski from Union Studios Architects, and Mike Darvo from Darvo Surveying. And also with us are Chris Schutz and Elizabeth Hool, they're project managers with Church Community.
There's nothing like a visual, so. And again, many of you may have seen this, whether it was part of your referendum package, or whether it was in the newspaper, or whether it was the council.
Great, okay. Hi, I'm Paul Atman. I'm a Senior Associate at Union Studio Architecture and Community Design in Providence. I live at 65 Church Street, Warren, Rhode Island. So across the bridge, not far from here. I'm going to keep this brief. I think you've already seen some of the collateral that we submitted, and I'll walk you through a little bit of the project. If I can advance the slide. There we go. Sorry. We were founded in 2001 with the sole purpose of using our skills as architects and urban designers to make civic contributions to communities of all types. We're about 25 to 27 employees in Providence, and one in Philadelphia. And we are mission-based, using our power of design to enrich lives and strengthen communities of all sorts. And those are lived through, a lot of our projects, civic projects, which is on upper-left, the Tiverton Public Library, student housing in Middlebury, up on upper-right, urban planning and revitalization, as well as affordable housing throughout Rhode Island and Massachusetts, and institute, or commercial and private work as well. So I think I'll walk through a little bit of the site understanding. You're all very familiar with it, it's not far from here. It's up on Bristol Ferry Road, past the intersection with Sprague Street and 114. Looking closer at it, it's on the corner of Brownell Lane and Bristol Ferry Road. The existing building is further up on the sloping site along Bristol Ferry Road with the ball field toward the back. This here is an existing site survey showing the, the details and the grading of what is there now. There's an existing building which was added on to in about 1950s to add some more classrooms to the school, and that portion now is the Portsmouth Senior Center. Looking at this a little bit closer, on the north property line, there's a heavy vegetative buffer, as well as the very westerly property line, but that's the sloping downhill side of the site. There's some very nice sunset and water views of Narragansett Bay. And then there's the baseball field that anchors the middle of the site with the Abachu Courts and Memorial Garden in the up in the northeast corner. What's interesting about the site and the vehicular access is it, there's a lot of it. Two points of access off of Bristol Ferry Road, which is a very fast road with north and southbound traffic, and then there's two curb cuts along Brownell Lane. And in our proposal, we've tried to minimize the amount of traffic and really consolidate points of entry and egress from the site. Let's see. Okay, here's some photos, early photos of when the school was. Let's see. Okay, here's some photos, early photos of when the school was first opened back in nineteen twenty eight. And the the floor plan, as Christian mentioned, it's a four room schoolhouse, very traditional. Some existing pictures, the one story flat roof area is that addition that I mentioned that was added on in the fifty s. It's in very poor shape, leaky roofs, cracked walls, very poor ADA accessibility. But actually, the current accessibility is on the north end of the building, not at the primary entrance to the building. So the proposal is to begin by that demolition of that one. Well, I shouldn't say that. We're going to work out a phasing because eventually that north addition will be demolished. And the the four school, the four room schoolhouse will be converted into the six units of market rate condos here on the on the corner. So the the site, the plan that we've developed is to really, as I mentioned, to really focus ingress and ingress into the site with one curb cut off of Bristol Ferry Road that services the senior housing and the senior center. And then you can also enter it off the, from the south side along Brownell Avenue. The market rate condos would have their own reconfigured parking in the front of the building with their own entrance off of Brownell Road. The existing ball field will be relocated to the southwest corner. And as Christian mentioned, we'll be working through the engineering stormwater and the, sorry, the touchpad is a little finicky. And I'll go back to there. And also the septic, which will probably be located in the northwest corner of the site. There's also another easier access point for serviceability for the senior center on the north side with a trash pickup and enclosure on the north side of the property and some additional convenience parking. As Christian mentioned, we've worked with the Portsmouth Senior Center to consolidate and relocate and reimagine the senior center, you know, much more efficient layout and much more adaptive to their needs, but also integrated into the new build of the senior housing. And this plan shows that the what the first floor plan on the upper right, how would that integrates with the site with the senior amenity spaces in the lower right hand corner, which would be the southeast corner. And then with this additional senior center amenities up in the north part of the building. And then the rest of the first floor is housing. Now, on the left hand side, you can see the second and third floors that are proposed. Predominantly one bedrooms, there's a total of forty one bedrooms and fourteen two bedrooms for a total of fifty four affordable senior apartments. That, those two floors then are are span over the entire first floor. So the second and third floors of, let's say, the headpiece of the building are over the proposed senior center. We, I just, we're showing you the existing floor plan of the existing senior center. We did an analysis of all their spaces that they use and in terms of square footages, their functions and their relationships. That helped us with the working committee to inform a better and more improved and efficient senior center that is on the first floor of the new building. As you can see, there's a dividing line to the left of residential, which we don't show on this partial floor plan. Because this was as far as we brought the the plans with the working group to as a as a starting point when we begin more of the engineering and detailed construction documents. This here is an early rendering of what that building would look like. And as was mentioned earlier, it is a three story building, but the third story would be designed to be within a a the roof or in the attic. So it seems to be from the street and other parts of the site and Brownell Street as perceived as a two and a half story building, not a three story building. I'm not sure if we should have Mike mention it, talk about site engineering. I think we haven't really given much attention to that at this point.
Well, we'll be back over all the engineering. I really think conceptually, this is what everybody sees tonight.
By one clarification, you've mentioned the phasing. And, you know, originally, when we started working with Senior Center Advisory Group, our first thought was that we were going to build the senior housing right off of the back of the existing senior center. But when the senior advisory group learned that that would mean that they would need to close up shop while renovations were occurring, when construction was happening, they were like, well, that's not ideal. And so the the current plan is to build the new building first. Build the new senior center and the senior housing first, so that the senior center can stay open in its current capacity for the duration until a new senior center is completed and they can move over immediately without any interruption in their operations. And then following that, that's when the portion of the building that was added in the early nineteen sixties would be demolished because it's just too far gone. And the renovation and conversion to the four room schoolhouse to market rate condos would be good.
And that was an important consideration with the senior center staff that they didn't want to be homeless or find temporary housing in term period of how long it would take to build. But we'll be here with not only construction phasing reports, but time the LMI ordinance has us actually tell you what our construction schedule is. Time we start, anticipated times to finish this. So that's pretty much the site layout. We do expect neighbors to have some input. The thing I noticed that that driveway on the backside certainly may be a contention. But some of this stuff, again, we'll have to determine if changes to it would be substantial. I think making some concessions, if it needs to be for neighbors that aren't substantial, is still possible to do. But it has to be substantially similar to what we have here. Timing wise, we have to put everything together for you to meet not only the checklist of a specially used permit, but the LMI. And that means the actual rendition and the drawings and actual site plans, at least meets the engineering. It doesn't necessarily mean a full DEM approval, but it means the design for the septic system that we expect to be done, subject to that approval and the permits. We have to there'll be some Bristol Ferry State Road, so there'll be some state permits. Notice that right now it's going to be pretty easy for those of you that hopefully, because the entire front of this property is an open thing that they probably want to close. I think it's got three or four openings at fifty feet wide apiece. And then there's another two on Brownell. So we don't, we anticipate almost every current situation getting a little better. There is a criteria, you know, one of the reasons tonight is to get some guidance. Again, this is a little bit of what has been told to the council and things. But one of the A through J criteria is that one of the A through J criteria is that we don't create traffic hazards. And one of the ways that that's somehow done, it's it's done with a traffic count. Sometimes the zoning board requires us to do that and sometimes they don't. You can reserve your right if everybody complains and wants it, they are expensive. Where an LMI trying to fit very tight budgets. If it comes up, you can do it. If you know you want it in advance, then better to do it now than to have to continue in the middle of a petition to take thirty days normally for the traffic counts at least to be to be done. There are some traffic counts that have been done in that area for the club and for Newport Beach Club over the years. They're not as fresh as maybe they could be, but they do exist. So we do, we are looking for some guidance in that area. Ultimately, it's up to the board. You can, if you see it as complicated, either by technical review, by driveway layout or or septic or building, ask for a technical review. You can have a subcommittee if you want to do it. We stand here trying to get this moving with a comprehensive permit. But right now we're the delay because we're not necessarily ready. So if there's a technical review committee, we'll be ready for it if that's what the board wants. If you find it complicated in the middle of it, I think you have the right to kick it to that as well. But if you anticipate it now, we just like marching orders that we can follow. We don't necessarily have a strong opinion on how you want to go forward. We're not trying to cut corners. We're just trying to do it right and to make sure that everybody has the opportunity to have every question answered that could that could come up. But also in a reasonable way, because it's not all that complicated. It's fairly straightforward project.
Anything else, Mr. Chappelle?
I believe that's all we have for tonight.
I'll just sort of restate what Court just said, which is that, you know, we haven't proceeded with the the engineering work because we wanted to get your input first so that we knew what direction to go in. You know, what other studies we may need to to commission. And so, you know, based on what you tell us tonight, we'll, you know, proceed following that guidance, whatever. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. So before I take questions from the board, I was, I'd just like to ask Mr. Crosby if if he had any particular opinion after being in this business for so long, either on the traffic or the TRC question that was posed, if you could offer your opinion, Gary?
I think that in in as a matter of caution on the that perhaps you would want to think about those things, but it's entirely up to you. I think that certainly Design Review Board would want to be seeing this and it's it's up to you about a set about traffic and about Technical Review Committee, whether you have the expertise or whether you feel like you can understand what they're doing to to be able to receive.
Okay. Board members? Just Mr. Pullout will start on your end.
On the traffic, I think maybe account might be, like they said, it's expensive or whatever, but maybe more of a analysis based on, you know, what are the, what are the, what is the traffic that's being added by this development versus what's existing there? Because that's kind of what the the traffic impact is, you know, the the pre-built, post-built kind of condition. So maybe some sort of statement from your consultant saying, you know, this is what we expect to generate as far as trips. That might, that might be enough, you know, to kind of waive the the traffic impact analysis.
They certainly have all the engineering or sightline studies, where the driveways are, distance to lights, all that information that you consider every time you have these.
Is there any design consideration as far as like access of, you know, unique vehicles to to the senior center? Like, you know, there's probably going to be some, you know, ambulances and fire trucks and, you know, is there any like ride pickups planned, you know, from the you know, the Department of Transportation to access?
Right, and we'll be prepared and I'll be prepared to do that. Also, remember that one of the criteria for the application is that we submit to the to the fire department. So the fire department, as far as ambulance, emergency buildings, emergency vehicles, fire, fire engine, those things, they're going to make sure all our roads are wide enough. They're going to make sure we have the turning radiuses. They're going to make sure we have the proper hydrant facilities and they get a letter or give a letter eventually to what is normally the zoning board, that they have reviewed the plans and don't see any issues or would like you to consider the following. So that's going to cover some of that. The police department does the same. Police Department doesn't usually have a number of issues with this, but they may have issues regarding the distance from a ball field to to elderly housing, whatever input Mr. Peters wants to have. Mr. Woodhead from Department of Transportation was already on the committee and and had some input in facilities and things like that. But he will also have a letter or a presentation as part of our presentation saying that from Department of Transportation's opinion, this petition should receive a positive recommendation. So a lot of that stuff that's going to get covered indirectly is the traffic count itself that wouldn't be at this point. But some, you know, as we as we recognize, sometimes people come and challenge very specific things and there's a room full of people that are addressing traffic. We understand if we have to go get one. What I don't want to do is to have you look at us and say, you quote, why weren't you smart enough to go get that done? And my client will get me, why don't we just spend five grand? Because we don't know that it's necessary. If it is, I guess we can reserve the right to do it if you want it now, then we'll do it now. But I kind of appreciate that, that we give everything but if you will. And I'll try to get some of it in. I think you know that I know those Bristol Ferry counts were done fairly recently for a couple of other petitions.
Yeah, I know there's like a square footage trips conversion rate. So maybe just by using that, you could say, this is what we're producing now. This is what we're producing post development. I don't think it's going to be that much.
No, and that I know we can do that because every time that we have a they have one bedroom senior housing generates per day. Three bedroom kid houses generates per day.
Right.
Courts house sixty seven trips per day.
I just have two more quick questions. I didn't see anything on the site plan for stormwater management. And as you know, we we love our stormwater management here and I know that's part of the engineering, but it would, you know, it makes us feel better if you actually see something reserved for that versus not having anything at all. Because then it's like, oh, where are we going to jam this thing in? So.
That's definitely to come.
And when we come, all the drainage counts to support it, that stuff that certainly we have to also give to zoning board. They usually refer that over.
You can use it to irrigate the ball field. And my last comment would just be it might be nice to have like a walking path around the perimeter of the property, you know, to for people to kind of get out. And it looked like it was sort of intrinsic to the parking areas. It would be nice to get a path around the whole thing that, you know, but just throwing it out there, not not a requirement.
Yes, I'll see what I can do. We're already sort of pushing the envelope with the amount of funding that will be required to go to create the new senior center. That's a long path around the perimeter, but we'll certainly keep our eyes open for funding opportunities that might be able to accomplish that.
So as I understand that in human terms, the financing for senior housing is exact dollars per unit. They don't allow you to fund housing and to put a million dollars worth of amenities because that's not what LMI housing is all about. So there's an exact ratio. That ratio is why, when you saw the presentation of the senior center amenities that were part of the building and the separate senior center that was part of the town, that's because the maximum we could do under senior center amenities with housing is this much square footage. So we put it here and then that extra stuff that we're doing with private money we did for the housing here. Combined, they make a very nice, large thing. It's all of the members of the senior citizen center will be able to use the amenities of this building and the amenities of this building will be members of the senior center. So in the world of reality, it doesn't matter, but in the world of financing, that's why you see it in two pieces. And that's what he means by an extra amenity and thing. If that's thirty thousand dollars, might take off twenty square feet over here. And that's the issue that we're up against.
That's that's absolutely correct. There's, you know, as I pointed out, a thrift store and offices for a senior center or senior center staff is not spaces that would typically be constructed in an affordable senior housing development. And so that's why we broke out that portion of the new senior center as the senior center condo that the town would own and then leased to the senior center organization. Because that's that's where the thrift shop is housed, where the offices are housed. And then also it's where the kitchen and the fitness center are located as well. Because we realized through our work with the senior center advisory group that those were spaces that you would want to have more control over. That shouldn't be open twenty four hours a day because God forbid, if one of the residents of the senior housing development were to injure themselves working out in the fitness room and the senior center staff had all gone home for the day and nobody was there to be able to respond to that. So that portion of the senior center building that's identified as the senior center condo would be, you know, controlled by the senior center group and be able to be locked. And at the end of the day, when the senior center group, so that the thrift store and all the contents can be secured so that there isn't activities that are unsafe for the So that, uh, there, there isn't, uh, activities that are unsafe, uh, for the residents happening after the senior center staff left. And so as Court alluded to, um, we anticipate applying for community development block grant funds, to cover the cost of that component of the building identified as the senior center condo. And we're pretty much maxing out the amount that, uh, we believe they'll be willing to fund for that. And so then to ask for more money to do the path around me, just not. There are limits.
Most, most might, most back my word.
Well, we'll definitely try.
Anything else, Mr. Plow?
No, that's it.
About Mr. Tippett's?
Uh, thank you. Yeah. And you, uh, you did answer a few of the questions I might've had through the discussion. So thank you. Just, uh, tying back into the trying to consolidate points of entry, I can see you're, you, you want to keep the condos separated. I'm looking, um, more to the west of that, the twenty-six spaces. I'm just curious if that loading, uh, considers and is based on, public, you know, traffic using the baseball thing. I, I know, I, I think I hear the concern and I see the topography. So that baseball thing mean that may not ever happen. So I'm just kind of curious if it's designed out, if that affects your loading. Or if that's, uh, how that's considered.
Well, the good, I can tell you that the baseball field right now utilizes, has probably all the parking in the world. Cause they utilize all the pavement around the building. But it's Saturday mornings, which generally aren't consistent with our loading times and zoning times. And we are in control of our loading times so that we can make sure they're not Saturday morning. There really isn't much use of that. The field, uh, whether it's owned by us or the town. There's actually a big process in town. We have to sign up for these fields. There's time so you don't get there when it's not there. So the town and the little league that has rights to it controls that. So Saturday mornings, you know, there's randomly, there's a kid and his dad that goes out there and throws balls. I'm not overly concerned with that parking. It's when you have, a playoff game that every parent goes to and there's thirty or forty spots. We need to be able to show you that we've, looking into designing a system which doesn't leave that all on brown LA and affecting the neighbors.
And, and then, uh, just one other thanks, um, to the discussion of the long-term lease and a contingents. Contingent on it being a substantially similar to that group by the referendum. Are there any concerns you have, you know, however I define substantial, are you defined substantial? Are there any big concern takeaways at this point with?
There's nothing proposed at all that's different from what we did. So right now we started with, this is exactly what we saw. So if you granted it, there would be no substantial change. But, you know.
Through design, understand that it'll evolve. I just want to make sure.
If somebody wants a dumpster moved to a different spot, for instance, and we have to redo some things, I'm not calling that substantial. I'm, I'm calling that some accommodations in a special use permit, that the board is allowed to do to try to minimize effect on neighbors. If it came to a point where you had to get rid of the senior center, that's substantial. Or we were adding to make it bigger, clearly any building size difference, I think is substantial. Clearly any amenity that we've promised that is canceled is substantial. Clearly we qualified that the ball field would be there if possible. So I don't think that's substantial because it's pre-qualified. It wouldn't be. But if engineering drainage takes up twenty spots or thirty spots and we need a super large variance. It would be the reason we lost the ball field, not the reason that there's a substantial change because we're creating parking hazard. So I don't really anticipate that there's going to be, uh, that, that many, but I, I did want to bring it to your attention. It's here after all the Kingsmen and all the King's horses negotiated to get it looking like it is already. So we bind you, but that's what went to the town, went to the council. I would like to think it has their blessing. Interesting, remember if the town owns this, no zoning. There was actually debates or discussions on whether when a private entity leases it from the town, is it town owner this? Clearly the safest thing and the right thing is to put it through the zoning. Again, if it was just town owning, we leased it from them as opposed to, us owning the building. We don't know zoning applications or planning.
And I, I'd just say for our own, uh, comfort level, whenever there's something, even the relocation of, dumpster, um, we're going to be checking with the town to see if they deem it to be a substantial change, the plans. Because if they deem it to be a substantial change, then we don't have a ground lease. And without the ground lease, we don't have any land to build it on. So, you know, we're definitely going to be very cautious about changes and ensuring that it, it does not, exceed the, the town's interpretation of a substantial change.
And that may be just one thing that we don't usually have and say timeout before you vote, close the meeting. Maybe we go to the council and say, these are the recommendations that the planning board is seeking to put in. Can I have a finding substantial or do you, do you have any issue with it being substantial? And we'll seek Kevin to see if that's the case.
Anything else, Mr. Tippett? It's Wilson.
Just when you're designing this thing, just remember there are different, uh, things like pervious pavement. That might help. I mean, if you don't have to put a drainage basin in back. And if you could do it in the pavement, you know, collect the water there, it could probably be a wash, but, remember there are certain things that can help, you know, move this along, especially with permits for environmental. Of course, it will be a D O P cap, but I can see it would be a problem with that.
Any else? Okay, Mr. Harding. Can you turn your, make your mic up?
First of all, I love the whole idea of the whole thing. Uh, just out of curiosity, the marketplace building. How does that? You know, like the cutting of the grass and the plowing of the parking for those particular units. Are those the town taking care of it?
Okay. An HOA fee with the, the condos that would, you know, be calculated to include the costs of maintenance and plowing and all of that.
So that grass area and the parking in the front becomes their headache.
There'll have to be an individual condo document for the common owners of those six units. And then would identify what is unique to that building that would go into a condo association fee or HOA just for that building. And then to the extent there was overlap, think of a quidnick where the gate, for instance, is a little bit taxed to everybody. But certain areas are only taxed to one of the sub condos like the tower concierge. So would have a master plan. And if there's a agreement that everybody pays X for snow plowing, that will all be part of the documents. That we generally submit as either maintenance, like a maintenance plan for a detention area, you know, spread out between everybody.
Just another, uh, couple of questions. I'm sure there's a good reason. When Kerry School was converted, the most expensive, the nicest condominiums, were what was the attic conversion. The view from up on that roof, which I've happened to be on, is spectacular. Uh, I just always envisioned what, I went inside that attic, if there had been a deck cut in and condominiums. If so, if those were able to be developed with there, there would be your money for your path around the, the building.
And, and I actually had, I had absolutely the same reaction when I got into the attic. Our contractor that's been helping us with construction estimates, uh, did not immediately see a viable attic conversion. But it's definitely something I'm going to continue to pursue because like you, it, I think those condos with those views would be really terrific.
I mean, if you just, I, I would get somebody from B and Brothers to take you for a tour of what they did down at Kerry School. And what was involved since they were, it would be money, time well spent to, to see it. And last but not least, and I, and I think you guys have already been touching on it, uh, the trash enclosure. Happens to be almost next to the house of the people that live next door. And, and if you parked in the last parking place closest to that, you don't even have the ability to back up. So it would move even further to be right next to their house. And I would think to avoid a battle if there's any place ahead of time that.
My bet is one of the reasons I specifically meant, mentioned that is not a substantial change was because I saw that.
Yep.
And not an ultra-damos, but I've been standing in front of this board for a long time. That is going to be something that I expect would come up. I think it's a reasonable request of the neighbor and when it does, we've already discussed, I believe we're going to have an alternative plan. We put this forward today because I thought we had to do the same and nobody raised it.
Yep.
But those of us that sit in these.
Ironically, one of the, one of the people that started church community, his, her brother, had that house for many years and his son lives there right now. So he'd have the pleasure of listening to the garbage trucks and the dumpster right next to his house would not be good karma. So. All right, that's all I had.
All right. Thanks, Luke. Mr. Garso.
I, I think it's pretty nice, but you know, I'd be curious to see how, if you're going to designate parking, to residents as opposed to the folks that are just going to the senior center. And the people that go to the store, et cetera. And the ball field, like, is it just a first come, first serve or? Will the people living there have designated spots and?
It will, um, we'll show you the numbers, but we own approximately two hundred and fifty units of elderly affordable housing. At seven different locations and the, the parking demand is, uh, less than one car per two units. So at a fifty-four unit development, we expect there to be approximately twenty-five cars associated with those fifty-four units. So it really insignificant, just senior affordable housing, the, the parking demands are just very minimal compared to pretty much every other use. So I, I don't, I don't envision there being a lot of fighting over parking spaces. Particularly because, um, you can see where the entrance to the housing, uh, portion of the development is. I think, uh, most of the residents are going to be parking, um, in that western part of the lot. And the spaces nearest the senior center, um, will most likely just because of the, design of the, the building, uh, will be open for people, the members of the senior center who are attending.
Do you see, see where there might be more entrances added to the building? Like say on the west end. Uh, as opposed to just from that one side is just one entrance?
It's, it's possible. We'll have to look at, uh, the hallway lengths and fire exit requirements. And, um, it, it, it could, definitely something we'll look at and figure out if we need to add more entrances.
I think Dave too, it's, you hit fifty-five and over and you think of maybe like the Tiberian Star Wars, which isn't really LMI and has a completely different clientele than are normally in his, uh, two hundred and fifty LMI units. They're generally.
Average age is sixty-six years old. They are almost, you know, the, the vast majority are, um, single women who have outlived their husbands.
Still have two cars though, right? Well, we certainly, and again, part of this meeting is, I think it is important because our ordinance for shared parking says, I want you to start by calculating what you need for parking for senior center, based on square footage that's in our ordinance. And then based on what you need on a per unit basis, and then maybe what you need on a ball field. And say if these were independent, this is what you'd need for all three. Here's what we have and while it's works. And then you decide if that shared parking arrangement is enough. Some things and to consider is like if the baseball field is Saturday morning, well, that's good because we don't have a loading zone. And that's not necessarily the senior centers at most active time. They tend to be nine to five, I think, on Monday through Friday or nine to seven.
I'm not certain, but closing time.
But we'll have all that for you. I think that's, those are valid. And, and again, the, this we know, if we get rid of a baseball field, we have all the parking we need. And we try to save baseball fields. And it may even be a consideration that we'll try this. And if it does not work, the planning board reserves the right to say, we're going to have to remove that baseball field and put in parking if it becomes a problem. That's always a possibility as well with a review. But parking became more of an issue when we tried to save the acreage for that field. But that's part of our job to convince so that there's going to be enough. Or collectively, there's not going to be enough and we'll have to make adjustments with the field that has been announced.
Anything else, Dave? You're good. So I, I just had a, I kind of echo my fellow members' comments. I, I love the look, kind of the blend of the old and new. I, I think the fabric of it is, is really neat. And I like the way you've incorporated the third story into the roof line. I think that, that's really nice. I, I did have a, kind of echo Mr. Harding's comments about the dumpsters. You got one in the front yard here, which I don't really go for either. So maybe that's something you could work on. Court's got that for action. And then, and my last question is you mentioned the condo regime for the, for the existing buildings. So six units are going to be in there. Are they going to own those and fee simple? Are they going to be under the ground lease as well? And it's just kind of a.
Yeah, they would have to be on the, on the eight separate ground leases as well.
Okay. So you've carved that piece out that, got it. But the entire ground is going to remain owned by the town. It's not, okay, got it. All right. So just to, some recap as I was making notes here. So you'd asked some questions, Court. I, I think one of them is design review board. I'm, I'm not speaking for the board, but it sounds like from an architectural standpoint, you probably want to get in front of them.
And, and we don't object to that. I, I think technically the comp permit talks about one board and not doing all that. But that's really for time. And to go to design review, we have what we need for design review.
Right.
And we need time to do some of the more, for the engineering. They're generally landscaping this. So because it doesn't cost time, there was, there's no reason in the world not to get their input and we would be happy to do that.
Great.
I'll do a contemporaneous.
Sure.
I think we'll, we won't be, at best, we'll be back in two months. It may very well be three.
We're, we're.
We won't be on May, right?
No, we won't be.
I said summer, you go, that's, we're too far away. That's two months.
Time flies.
Got it. Um, any question, any, I, we're not going to take a vote, obviously, because it's, it's pre-conceptual. Any other questions from the board members? Any questions for us?
No, the, the other thing is, I really don't know whether there's going to be seven thousand people in the, complaining or supporting because that's just the nature of our cops these days. But if it become, if it starts to look like we should have an individual meeting, rather than put it on a meeting where we take up everybody else and I ask the board to set an additional meeting. I wonder if you'd consider that if it, sometimes these things go through and, and, you know, we've think, done things at a quidnick and, and that nobody shows up. Sometimes I did a golf course, but I thought nobody would show up and two hundred people in a room objected. So if it becomes something that warrants an individual meeting, I'd ask the.
So again, I'm, I'm not speaking for the board, but I would consider that because I was just thinking of your timeline. I think June's going to be tight to come back and we typically don't meet in July. But I would think that if come the June meeting, you, we should consider a special meeting. I think we would take that under advisement because it's a very important project. So that's just my opinion. I, yeah, exactly.
I, I, I think what will happen is, yeah, we'll try to file by June with notice that it's only on for scheduling. So that we don't.
Right.
Bring twelve witnesses and that a bunch of people that are behind us don't think that they're not going to.
And the meeting in June is early. I think it's the eighth. So. That, that's a tight one.
Well, we'll do the best and if not, well, it's August and that's what we got.
Is, is funding coming based on what you get to a certain point? Or is there so much because of the condos there, that it's going to be money generated that's going to help us move on?
Yeah, I mean, we, there are really two things for funding. It's site control, which we have through the option for the ground lease. And it's permitting approval. And so, um, we, in order to pass thresholds for the funding applications, we need to be able to show that we have had a, at least gotten through master plan with an approval. And really you need preliminary plan approval to, um, to, to be seriously considered.
So that creates one interesting thing because Kevin's reading of the ordinance, which I don't disagree with, our ordinance, the town enforcement ordinance says LMI can be done if it's a subdivision through the subdivision regulations, which as we all know, a master preliminary final. But then it says if it's not a subdivision through other town ordinances and that's the zoning board and the special use permit with addition, the LMI criteria, if I'm saying it right, right, Kev? So when I told Christian that tonight, that we were talking about that, his concern is that funding applications that he's normally seen are all based on, do you have preliminary, do you have master, we have that. So we're looking in to whether or not they need to see it as a subdivision. I don't think it changes. We'll be here for a special use permit. And if you were granting it, let's say, can you also grant? Remember the, there's the same notice, the same public master plan approval. And then rather than get a final approval, we'll go back for a preliminary final combined. So I think there's a way to skirt it if our funding requires and says, I don't care what the enforcement ordinance says, but in the state ordinance, I want this.
Right.
But we'll be prepared. Kevin and I and Gary will work that out. I thought we had, but we'll work that out before we get back here.
And, and regardless what the determination is, as long as we can show the funders that the approval that we have is substantial, you know, everything but final, um, that will satisfy them.
Because we have to have, people have to be able to speak locally about it so it doesn't feel like it's rigged, but we don't have to drag it through all of the stuff that's.
And, and again, I, 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 the opinion, I like it. I appreciate it. I think it's accurate. It just took him, took Christian back who's done so many of these that he sees everybody normally plug them into the subdivision ordinance. He's just like, well, let me make sure my finance guy agrees with that. That's all. That's, it's not blaming anybody's right or wrong, just came up tonight and he saw this issue. And I talked to Kevin, I thought it was all but financing wasn't in the role, might have to work. I realize that's important.
Yeah, typically, um, the, the big, um, nine percent tax credit application, which is the the, um, most important, uh, source of funding for this type of development. Typically that round is in December. And so that would really be when we would need to have, you know, that permitting that where, where, whatever form it takes, um, where we're, you know, we, we either have final approval decision in hand, or that's all we're waiting on. And we've already gotten special use permit or master plan preliminary, uh, at that point.
So
All right.
Unlike some, not as much of a rush as normally the gun to our heads, right?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Share.
Thank you, everybody.
All right. Next on our agenda is the, um, monthly status report. What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to, uh, accept the, uh, report subdivisions and flat recordings and place on file.
Second, so we've got a motion made in second by Mr. Tippett and Mr. Harding. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. How about a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.